Welcome to the April 17, 2023, meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting allows for alternative participation order to accommodate all citizens. Any written comments sent to staff were forwarded to the commission directly. This time I introduce our staff. Mr. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney, Michael Garner, Civil Engineer, Zach Pons, Director of Planning, Haley Webb Planner, Tiana Rivas, Office Administrator. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all who were appointed by the mayor, for stagger terms with the exception of the City Council Representative, who is appointed by the City Council. I ask the commission members introduce themselves, starting with this hair.
Estella Hare, Finance.
Oh, there it is. Dina Prince, Attorney.
Vince Dooley, U.A. Campus Development.
Jim Harrison, General Counsel.
Eddie Pugh, Retired.
And Bill Wright, a Business Owner. There are sign up sheets outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition and four are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. All speakers will have a maximum of five minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. Procedures, this commission will take up items in the order of our final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. In addition, we may hear certain matters involving the same property, such as an annexation and a zoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involving the same property. After the staff presentation, although I call upon petitioner to present their case, the petitioner will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. At the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, I will then call on any party in order of sign up otherwise who opposes, who desires to support the petition. Thereafter, we'll call in order of those who sign up and those in opposition of the petition. When it's your turn for comment, please introduce yourself, stating your name and address for the commission for the record. Any written comments have been included into the record. After receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to those objections. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. If the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, we will allow those who oppose the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. During the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce your allowed time limit. Once the commission members are satisfied they have received all relevant information, we'll then close for further discussion by the public, at which time the commission members will discuss the matter and then vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Comments made by phone are virtually, are virtually, are video recorded through the conferencing application. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction, in all matters pertaining to subdivision regulations, approval of subdivisions within the city and its planning jurisdiction, and as to amendments, planned unit developments, and located outside the city limits, this commission serves as the final authority. As to matters pertaining to historic buffer zone construction, our decision is subject to appeal to the City Council. As to all remaining agenda matters, including original zonings, rezonings, planned unit developments within the city, and street vacations, this commission serves as a recommending body to the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to be presented to the City Council, and the City Council will make the final decision on those matters. Subdivision approvals requires the affirmative vote of six members of the Planning Commission. All matters which are recommendations to the City Council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. This time, do any members of the commission have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters before us tonight? If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest, as required by law, as to all matters before the commission tonight.
It has.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I will ask that, related to something we haven't done in quite some times, we have not approved minutes. So with that, we will begin with the approval of minutes. As the Planning and Zoning Commission has received synopses of the January and March 2023 meetings, I move that we dispense with a reading of the minutes of the same unless there are any deletions, additions, or corrections. So move.
Second.
All those in favor of passing those minutes for January, March, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, minutes are approved. We're going to move into the consent agenda items. Has anyone signed up to speak for or against those two items? Anyone in the audience care to speak to those two items on the consent agenda? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Good evening, Commission. This evening, we have two companion cases. We'll begin with companion case A. It will consist of an annexation, PUD, and subdivision. Starting with that annexation case, we've got ANO523. This is to annex approximately 2.65 acres, and it's located at 5421 Rice Mine Road Northeast. Here's that vicinity map shaded in yellow are the existing city limits. We are just north of Rock Quarry Elementary, right across from Pinnacle Park. And here's an aerial view of that property. This is outlined as a primary expansion area, and it also falls under our Lakeside Living Future Classification. And this is due to the connection of city services tied to the PUD that we'll see in just a moment. As always, we have those eight points of evaluation criteria while we're reviewing our annexation reviews. And then the departments went on to say that ESD will be able to provide services here, and there were no further issues stated. Any questions before we move into the PUD? All right, jumping into it, we've got PO223. This is South Shore. It's a planned unit development consisting of six single-family residential lots and one open space lot, again on that 2.65 acres at 5421 Rice Mine Road Northeast. If brought into city limits, this will fall in Council District 3. Again, here is where we are, and the site we're looking at. This is for six single-family residential lots. They will have one open space lot at the beginning of the development as you turn in. It will be a gazebo gathering area. They have sidewalks throughout the development, and they have two off-street parking spaces per lot. The open area will be managed by an HOA, and the homes will range in one and two stories, from 1,500 square feet to 5,000 square feet, starting at around 400,000 upwards to a million. Here is that property that we're looking at. And here is the site plan showing what that will be. Zooming into the entrance of the development off of Rice Mine, again, you've got sidewalks going up through the entirety of it, stopping at that rear lot that we'll look at in just a moment. That open space lot right up front is where they're proposing to put the gazebo. They're having a 20-foot front yard minimum build line being shown, five feet on the sides and 10 in the rear. The smallest lot is just under 4,500 square feet, and they're having about 2.3 dwelling units per acre for the density. Then here is that lot six in the rear. The sidewalk stops right where that driveway begins. And here is the streetscape of what those could look like. And then here's their muse for the gazebo. And then jumping into the subdivision, just to recover what we just went over, six single-family residential lots, one open space, so this will be a seven-lot subdivision in total at 5421 Rice Mine, same area. Here's the site plan with contours and the plat without. They are also providing an easement to this property to the northeast, right there. And the street that they're proposing will also be public right-of-way. And variances requested for this will be a 150-foot street center line offset. That's because it's close in proximity to Pinnacle Park.
Engineering on the variance request?
We're okay with that request.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
All right.
Thank you. Petitioner.
Good evening. Bruce Higginbotham, Porter Higginbotham Engineering, and Mr. Aaron Sinckroft. There's not a lot we can add to this. We are requesting to go in as a PUD, and it will be six residential lots with one open space lot at the front of the property. The lot at the back of the property actually is a lot that Mr. Sinckroft is planning on building for himself, so. The houses, as she said, would run from 1,500 up to approximately 5,000 square feet, depending on the size of the lot. Lots themselves run from a little over a tenth of an acre to 1.02 acres, being the lot in the back of the property. The utilities in this area are, we're fortunate that they're available. The water is actually located along Rice Mine Road, so that was an easy connection. And there is sanitary sewer to the back of the property. The property itself does currently slope towards the lake. Obviously, the front half of the property is reasonably flat. It's kind of a rolling grade, and then the back lot is a little steeper. But everything on the property will drain back towards the back of the property, towards the lake where it currently drains today. If there are any questions, I can answer those too.
Bruce?
Yes.
It looks like the lot to the, I guess it would be to the north, is access through this current property. Is that how they access?
It is right now, sir.
How are y'all going to give him access during construction?
Okay. What we will do, well, there's two things. One, the owner himself, the owner has actually agreed to abandon the easement. He's content with coming in off of the main road. He likes that. His driveway currently is near that, near the cul-de-sac. You can see where the easement is. During construction, we will have to keep him away from what we're doing on the road. We'll have to talk to him, and there's, if you go out there, there's already a, it's a 20-foot easement. There's probably, what's the drive out there now, 10 or wider, maybe? The gravel drive that goes this property?
You're basically putting road where he's currently at.
We are. We're going to have to maybe, we may have to add something a little bit on with to get him away during construction, but yeah. The easement itself is split. Mr. Harrison, 20 feet is 10 on each side of the property.
I mean, final off the cul-de-sac, you're just going to give him a gravel?
Sir.
I mean, I guess right now, gravel road, you're just going to give him a gravel access?
If it's temporary, but as far as permanent, we'd have to give him back what he's got.
Y'all work this out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner?
How much distance is it between the development and the other, is it a neighborhood that's sitting behind it?
To the one to the south.
Yeah.
To give you an idea, the, you know, the property lines are, obviously, the property line is dividing. The residents to the south have a 10-foot minimum building line, and we mirrored that same 10-foot building, minimum line on our property as well. So you've got 20 feet minimum as far as your actual construction. We tried to mirror their building line.
Want to ask that question?
I was just going to ask, is no issue with the drainage towards the lake, is it, Mike? From the road and the residue and whatever?
Well, they'll have to go through the permitting process for this. It'll require a land development permit. They'll have to have a siltation bond for land disturbance activities that drain into the lake. We've had some preliminary meetings, and you can see they have a schematic there on their plan, which I feel like is very sufficient, but there'll, you know, the full design plans are yet to be seen, but it'll have to go through the permitting process.
I know it looked like there was a lot of trees, and I guess they'll be gone, so that was one reason about the silt fence and all that type of stuff that's going to be required. Lake always concerns me.
Little questions for petitioner? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Anyone sign up for or against? Okay. Anyone sign up for? We do have one, Mr. Porter.
Brock Porter. Hello, I'll be brief. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Brock Porter, 1307 25th Avenue, here on behalf of the Home Builders Association of Tuscaloosa tonight. We support this application. Glad to see another quality development in this area, and we think Tric Construction will do a great job. So if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you for being brief. Okay. Anyone that didn't sign up care to speak for or against? All right, having heard none, any thoughts or comments from the commission before we tackle these three items? Okay, let's bring up, I guess, our first will be the annexation. Commission before us, we have annexation 0523, annexing 2.65 acres located at 5421 Rice Mine Road. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Welcome to the city. Commission before us, we have P0223, South Shore Planning Development, consisting of six single-family lots. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Counselor?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Commission before us, we have PS 2023, South Shore, consisting of a single-family, six single-family lots, one open space lot, with one variance request of 150-foot street center line offset. Engineering has no issues with it. Do I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
This hair.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, jumping into our second companion case, it will consist of a subdivision and annexation. We'll begin with that subdivision. So we've got S 2523. This is a re-survey of Lot 8, Ridgeland, and unplatted land. It's consisting of one residential lot on approximately 2.78 acres, and it's located at 8 Ridgeland in Council District 3. Here's that vicinity map. We are just north of Tuscaloosa Academy, off of Rice Valley Road. Got Animal Medical Center in between Watermelon and Rice Valley. And here are those lots that we're looking at. So it's two today, and we're consolidating into one with this case. Here is that plat with improvements, showing where that proposed house would be. And the plat without contours. And just to preface, that proposed drive will have to go through the right-of-way use permit process. That's not being voted on tonight, just there for context. And then variances included with this will be capped sewer, half-street improvements, and sidewalks. Any questions on this one?
For Mr. Engineer, I do.
We're in favor of those variances.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Petitioner?
Oh, jumping into the annexation piece.
Trying to get ahead of you.
All right, and then from that plat that we just looked at, we are annexing approx, or requesting to annex approximately 0.61 acres of that. There's a tiny portion that is in the county, not in city limits, so in consolidating, they would also like to bring in that piece to city limits. Here's that little sliver. And this is a secondary expansion area identified as suburban residential. It would come in as R1, and the lot that's in city limits is already R1, so it would match zoning. And yes, it's for that lot consolidation, and it's already within city limits. Eight points of evaluation criteria outlined, and ESD said that they will be able to provide services here, and there were no other issues.
Any questions for staff?
I'm just curious, because this kind of backs up to Tuscaloosa Academy, and I know years ago, some of the lots in Ridgeland that were contiguous to the Tuscaloosa Academy property tied onto that sewer. And we just, did that run its course, or is there a reason why this, you know, I guess maybe it's out of range, or? You remember that, Mike?
I do. My understanding is, I think there's only three connections out of Ridgeland to the city system that's on the Tuscaloosa Academy campus. And that was an agreement that was reached between those three homeowners and the academy.
Okay.
As far as I know, no one else has approached the academy about doing that.
Okay.
Thank you. Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Chris Centel, Centel Engineering, Tuscaloosa. We're consolidating, when he purchased the lot, the auxiliary lot to the northwest came with it, same owner. And it's where we plan on putting this, the field lines for the septic tank. It's the only place that was, you know, really conducive to a field line. So the lower property, the south property, is kind of a low area, and it stays wet, so. I'd be glad to answer any other questions if we have them.
Any questions for petitioner? Pretty clean, thank you, sir. Anyone sign up to speak for or against? Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? All right, having heard none, we'll close. Anybody from this commission have any questions or staff? All right, commission before us, we have, you want to tackle the subdivision first or the annexation? Does it matter? Let's tackle the subdivision that's listed. We got subdivision 2523, a re-survey of a lot, 8 Ridgeland and unplatted land, and three variance requests, capped sewer, half-street improvement, sidewalks, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Counselor woman?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Commission before us, we have annexation of 0.61 acres located, number 8 Ridgeland. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Welcome to the city.
All right, tonight, we have one downtown riverfront overlay district case, and that is DROD 323. Heinz Atkins petitions to construct an addition and enclose the front porch on the existing structure located at 2605 11th Street. This is zoned BGO in the DROD, and also in Council District 1. Something similar came to you all back in September of last year, and we're back within different design. This is where we are. We are just south of the Murphy Collins House off of Lurleen South. And then here is the aerial view. Earlier this evening, there was a subdivision tied with this that was on your consent agenda. We are taking these three lots that you see consolidating into one, so we'll see that in the site plan in a few slides. Here is that property that we'll be looking at tonight, and here is a view from Lurleen, looking at the rear of it. And this is for a two-story addition. The addition on the first floor will consist of 2,224 square feet, and that's for more serving rooms for a nurse practitioner for the med spa portion. The second floor of the addition will have a break area for staff, and it will have additional office space, and that will be 833 square feet. Access for that will be through an interior staircase. They'll also be asking to enclose the existing front porch. It will allow for an additional 322 square feet. Totalling two for this project, 3,379 square feet of additional space to this building. They are also providing 23 off-street parking spaces, as well as four on-street parking spaces. Materials for this will be hardy board siding, vinyl windows, and a glazed aluminum storefront that you'll see on Lurleen. The Architectural Review Committee met on this and decided overall that it met the DROD standards and guidelines outlined in Section 24230. And again, this is the property that we'll be talking about, and here is a site plan. So it'll be a one-way in, one-way out, entering off of Lurleen South, exiting onto 11th Street. And we'll just be focusing on this existing building along Lurleen. So here's where that proposed addition will be. Coming in and exiting, they are also proposing to do sidewalks along the entirety, or the length of their property, and then maintain sidewalks that already exist along Lurleen. Here's the interior layout of that first-floor addition. I believe it'll be eight in total new exam rooms, and they'll have waiting space as well. And then you can see that staircase leading to the second story. And then here is the enclosure of the front porch, and then also along the right-hand side of your screen, that'll be that new aluminum storefront that we'll see in just a few moments. Also, too, they'll be removing some sidewalks and steps that go up to it. We'll be able to see that in the images. And then here is that break room area that'll be the second story. And then office space to the north of it. Walking around the building at the front, this is what they are proposing to do with a northern elevation, making that image a little bit larger. They're extending the brick veneer. They're also removing an existing dormer window, extending the roof, vinyl windows. Then here's that western elevation. So what we see now will be where you're exiting as you leave. On the left-hand side of this elevation, that is what's existing and proposed on the right. So again, it'll be hardy board siding, vinyl windows. And then looking to the rear, this is what we'll see. So it's a two-story, or it's a, it's another addition, it's a second story, so it'll be two stories in total. There's that entrance door on the back. And then moving to the eastern side, which will be along Lurleen, probably one of the most visual sides of it. And then that is where that new aluminum storefront will be, and removing those steps Do you have any questions for staff on this?
I know we saw this in the past, right?
That's right.
A year or so ago?
Yep.
And it had the siding and stuff on it, so all of that's going, all the siding and stuff's going away, though. Bottle siding?
Yep, from what I understand, they're doing all hardy board.
That's what they agreed to last.
That's right.
Okay.
All right.
Questions? Petitioner.
Jordan Morris, words got Morris Architecture, 1606 Bryant Drive, Tuscaloosa. Ms. Atkins has decided, since she's procured the piece of property next door and that frees up additional parking area, she wants to make the most of this piece of property. So with the idea that she has the ability to enlarge this addition, she's instructed us to make these modifications, taking into account the previous discussion, and that we're now looking at a larger-scale addition and renovation. We've revamped that front look to alleviate some of those concerns that we had in the previous porch enclosure discussion. And additionally, Mr. Pugh, to answer your question, all of the siding will be replaced. So it'll all be hardy on the entire structure.
Virtually a new building.
That's what we want. Make it look less like a house.
We talked about a little bit, and it's definitely more commercial looking on the front. You have the new addition in the back. Still a pitched roof in there.
Without, without resolving all of the roof drainage with a bunch of parapets and scuppers and things like that, that just knowing that with this level of construction, knowing it'll be wood frame and things like that, it just, and knowing that we still have the roof line of the house without removing that, which would be prohibitive to her operation, definitely seems like that, that felt like the way to go with the pitched roof.
Is the chimney standing?
Chimney is going away.
It's going away?
Yep.
Okay, good. That would look odd.
My apologies for not noting that and dashing that in.
We saw that chair vice chair, I think, took a note of that. Scratched her head a little bit. Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against? I don't think anyone has signed up, but anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against? I don't think anyone has signed up, but anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none, we'll close. Anybody from the commission have any questions or staff, or any comments? Having heard none, commission before us, we have D R O D oh three twenty-three, Heinz Atkins LLC, petition to reconstruct, or constructed addition at twenty-six oh five Eleventh Street. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion, second.
Ms. Hare?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, flipping to the backside of our agendas, we are at preliminary plats. We're starting with S twenty-two twenty-three, this is the re-survey of Lot Eight, Gates on Savannah. It's consisting of two residential lots on approximately point nine acres, located at one zero five nine Savannah Circle in Council District Three. Here's that vicinity map, so we are just across from where we were for that HUD. We are entering into the towns, looking at this aerial view. We're taking this lot, and they would like to split it in half, so here is that plat showing so. And in doing that, they'll be requesting a variance from Valley Gutter in lieu of standard carbon gutter, and topography for the plat purposes. They didn't provide a topographic plat.
Engineering?
We're in agreement.
Back to, that was a lot that we had consolidated before, correct? Or was it always, was always one lot?
It's been recorded as one. It's, it was never recorded as two separate.
All right. Thank you. Petitioner?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Michael McGuire. Um, it, it was originally planned to be two lots. And then when, once we got through developing in it, and we're just getting ready to record it, they had somebody that wanted to purchase both lots, so we combined it as one. Now we're going back and putting it back like it was. They, they never built the house, and the developers purchased the property back, so he's wanting to put it back into two lots. All the infrastructure's in place, water, sewer, sewer laterals. Basically, all we're doing.
So, Mike, you, your Lot Nine is similar, I see the lots to the north over similar with Lot Nine, all of them form pretty much same width?
Yes. Lot Nine's got a little small bottleneck, but it's in the very back of it.
We're not splitting a lot of them?
No. They were originally all planned to be seventy-five feet wide, and they're all seventy-five.
Any more questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none, commission before us, we have S twenty-two twenty-three, re-survey of Lot Eight, Gates of Willing, of Savannah, two variance requests, valid gutter, and topography, engineering has some issues with it. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
Councilwoman Howard?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, next case, we have S twenty-three twenty-three, this is Graco addition plat number one. It's consisting of one lot on approximately three point three four acres, and it's located at ninety-six oh one Highway sixty-nine South. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map. We are just north of Hinton Place. Here is an aerial view. So it is currently four lots, and they would like to go to one. Here is that plat with contours and without. And in doing so, they are requesting a variance from half-street improvements.
Engineering?
We're okay with that request. That's a, you know, the state highway.
Right. More questions for staff? Thank you. Petitioner?
Graves Watkins, one one six three zero McPherson, Lanin Road, Tuscaloosa. This was, uh, property that belonged to my, been in my wife's family since before the highway was built, and it was originally designed for, for family members, and time has gone by, and they've all moved off other places, so. It's, I purchased it from my father-in-law, and I just wanted to go ahead and get the process going to get up, get rid of the lot lines and have one lot.
Any questions for petitioner? Any plans for the lot yet, or just? Any plans for the lot, or commercial or residential, or?
Uh, probably some kind of commercial, but, I mean, it's down the road.
Down the road.
So. I just wanted to get it, because my mother-in-law's passed away, so now it's just my father-in-law, so we wanted to go ahead and get, get it purchased and get it put into my, my, me and my wife's name, so.
Just for the record, if it's a commercial, when it goes commercial, before, he, he'll have to annex, connect to the sewer.
Man, I don't have, I hadn't, I hadn't, my thought process has not gone that far, but I don't, you know, I don't have a problem with it, you know, just hadn't thought about that. But really more worried about the improvements that I got to do for the state, and the red light, and the slow-down lane, and the turn lane, and all that other business. It's a lot of, a lot of stuff's gotta fall into place before it happens anyway, so.
Yep. All right, any more questions? Thank you. Anyone has signed up for or against? Would anyone care to speak for or against this petition request?
Just to put it on the record as well, we did receive one letter in opposition to it. I forwarded all to you once we received it.
Right, thank you. Again, I'll pose a question. Any more questions of staff? Do I have a motion? Committee for, we have S twenty-three twenty-three, Graco addition, one variance request, half-street improvements, engineering has no issues with it. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion, second.
Ms. Hare?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All righty, next one, we have S twenty-four twenty-three, this is Moore Division, plat number two. It's consisting of three lots on approximately point seven eight acres, and it's located at one seven two seven and one seven three five Evergreen Lane. This is not in city limits. So we are now just across Highway sixty-nine South from where we just were, back behind the Wind Dixie, just north of Maxwell Loop Road. We'll be looking at these two lots. They would like to go from two to three. Here is that plat with contours and without. They're asking for a waiver from minimum lot width. They're required seventy-five, they're just shy of seventy-two. And they're also requesting a capped sewer waiver, as well as sidewalks.
Engineering? About the lot width, okay with that too?
Well, that's more planning.
Okay.
Any more questions, staff?
Um, I don't believe so.
There, there is city, there's city sewer in, in Old Greensboro Road, which is just off, you can, you can see a little tiny piece of the yellow line on, uh, Old Greensboro right there, so sewer, sewer is in very close proximity to the site. Uh, yeah.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Jamie Autry, fourteen seventy North Bank Parkway, Tuscaloosa. Staff pretty much covered everything, but what I'd like to add is, there isn't, there's an existing structure on Lot Three that's gonna be removed. The structure that was sitting between Lot One and Two has already been removed, so that's pretty much vacant. And there is a plan right now, we surveyed it this week, for sanitary sewer. I think Longleaf Engineering is gonna be putting that plan together and presenting it to the city, but there is a plan for sanitary sewer for Evergreen Lane. That's it.
Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none, commission before us, we have S twenty-four twenty-three, more subdivision, with three variance requests, capped sewer sidewalks, and minimum lot width, engineering has no issues with it. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, last case, we have S twenty-six twenty-three, this is the Ronnie Hamner subdivision. It's a reconfiguration of two lots on approximately five point three seven acres, and it's located at one two two three zero Lake Nickel Road. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map, it's near the intersection of Lake Nickel Road and Deerlik Road. Here is that aerial view. And again, it is two lots, remaining two lots, we're just shifting that lot line. Here's the plat without contours. We're going from here to here. And that's to give some separation with these existing homes. And variances requested for this are capped sewer and sidewalks.
Engineering?
We're in support of those requests.
Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, planning commission, I'm Chris Centel, Centel Engineering, Tuscaloosa. I can answer any questions. She did a really good job of presenting, so they're, they're wanting to sell Lot One, and they already have a buyer for it, but we had to separate the houses.
Pretty simple, pretty clean.
Very clean.
Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against? No one's in the building to do that, so. Mission before us, we have S twenty-six twenty-three, Ronnie Hamner subdivision, two variance requests, capped sewer and sidewalks. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Hare?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Any other business? If not, we are adjourned. Pons, I'll see you shortly.